The time is now five o'clock. Good evening and welcome, and thank you for joining the March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I am Dr. Felton Moss, the committee chair and District Seven Board Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. For those of you who are unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be assessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Ms. Lopez, will you please call the role?
Dr. Moss?
Uh, present?
Mr. Briggs? Ms. Busser Strather?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
There are three members present.
With a corn present, the Policy and Governance Committee meeting will come to order. The Chair would like to inform the public that to accommodate our visiting speaker this evening, the order of the agenda might vary just slightly. The committee will consider Agenda Item four point one, Policy zero one two four E-Rate Management, before Agenda Item three point O, the Legislative Update. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five meeting agenda as amended. The question is, are there any objections? There being no objections, the March twenty five, twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five meeting agenda is adopted, it as amended. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting minutes as distributed. Are there any corrections? There being no corrections, the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting minutes are approved. At this time, we'll move to our public comments. Rosa, are there any public comments? I do know our list, our early list said there are no public comments this evening. But just want to check with you to make sure there are no public comments.
Yeah, that is correct. We still didn't receive any comments for today.
Okay, thank you. We will now consider Agenda Item, we will now consider Agenda Item Policy zero one two four E-Rate Management. At this time, the Chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to introduce her presenters and to provide an overview of Policy zero one two four E-Rate Management. Dr. Zuckerman and Robin Evans and Ms. Welsh at this time.
Good evening, everyone. We're very fortunate to have Dr. Zuckerman, who is our Chief of Information Technology, as well as Robin Evans, who's the Supervisor of Telephone and Wiring Services to talk a little bit about the E-Rate Management policy and what's happening in the world of E-Rate Management. The policy we went over the last time, it was a revision, it was pretty old, so we went over a revision and made some major changes to it because it was very, previously had lots and lots of information in. And my understanding was that was set up for a very specific reason of something that had happened with E-Rate Management previously. And this time, the policy is really very specific to the process and what the law requires, as well as legal requirements in terms of access for students, what they can access and what they can't on the Internet. So I'm not going to say anything more because I think we have the experts here who can provide information for you and answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, and thank you, Board Members. E-Rate is a critical part of our technology modernization program and just our technology refresh program. We're fortunate to have Robin Evans, as Robin Welsh said, our Supervisor of Telephone Wiring Services, and just one of the most committed staff members in the system, who's always just fighting every day for our kids, for our schools, and to just get every last piece of funding we can. So, Robin, if you could just give just a very, very brief overview of E-Rate, and then we can open it up to questions. We don't have a formal slide deck, and I apologize, Robin Welsh, I didn't understand that was the direction. So we'll just give a very brief overview and just talk about the policy and answer any questions. So, Robin Evans, I'm going to turn it over to you. We, and I, oh, there we go. Good. Got you now.
The E-Rate program is governed by USAC, and it is a federal program that's ruled by the FCC, and it's based on our free and reduced lunches, the free and reduced lunch program. So our free and reduced lunch numbers dictates what our percentage of reimbursement would be for the program. And so currently this year, our reimbursement rate is eighty percent return. So each year, we spend about eight million dollars, and we get a little over six million back, which is, like Andy said, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of dedication to make sure that we follow federal, state, and local guidelines. I work very closely with my team, as well as the procurement, the purchasing office, and accounts payable, because we have to make sure that our bills are paid on time, so that we remain in compliance. Some of the the services that are eligible are our Internet service and our high-speed data, and then our, which is considered Category One. And then our Category Two is our infrastructure, so our switches, our Wi-Fi, and the equipment for, some of the equipment for our NOC. And I'm not sure if you guys
No, that's, that's perfect.
Have any questions?
Perfect.
More information?
Yeah, and I would just say, just to close it out, like Robin said, there's several staff members who work on this, just to make sure the accounting is all up to date. We get audited every so often, and we've, we've always done really well in that area. But ultimately, when we need to enhance the Internet, increase the bandwidth, refresh a school with the switches, the routers, like Robin said, the E-Rate program is, it's all a part of that. So if we're going to invest eight million next year, like she said, then the federal government will end up reimbursing us for six million of that. We have to lay that money out upfront, and then we get reimbursed on the backend. But it's a, it's a good program, so. Board Members, if there's any questions about how the policy can shape this, or where we go from here, we are happy to answer them.
Ms. Welsh, do you all have anything else for the presentation before we move into discussion?
No, unless, unless you want to review the policy again, but no, other than that.
Do either of my colleagues want us to review the policy again? If not, I'll move to discussion. Okay? The question
No, I don't, but I did, I did have something. Apologies for that. I couldn't get my hands up.
I can grab you during the discussion, Board Member Walker. If you, you're good?
You, you're acknowledging me?
Yeah, or I can do it during the discussion, whichever works for you.
Oh, oh, discussion is perfect. Thank you.
All right, I got you. The question is, shall the committee recommend Policy zero one two four E-Rate Management on the policy sponsor for revision approval? We can do some discussion at this time. And I'll start with
Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much for the warm introduction. I appreciate that. Dr. Zuckerman and Ms. Evans, thank you so much for your presentation. I just was going to ask, is there anything additional that you would like for us to consider adding to the policy? Or anything that you would like to see that's not already mentioned?
No, we're good. We, we supported as a staff level just some of the edits and revisions, so thank you for that question.
And I will, I will
All set. Thank you, Dr. Moss.
With that, oh, and I just wanted to mention part of the reason that we did have a little bit of a bigger revision than expected is because telephone services, for those of you who may not know, used to be eligible services. And that was in our old policy, so that was part of the reason that we also needed to make this, this revision, is to eliminate the actual telephone services part out of, out of the policy.
Board Member Walker, you've got time if you want to, before I jump in.
So much. It's really difficult for me to hear Ms. Evans, so I was wondering if you could just give a repeat of that, Dr. Zuckerman, so I could be clear.
Yeah, I will. And Robin, I don't know if there might be a mic issue. We'll have to check that. So what Robin said was just that in, in the previous policy, we included telephone services, but that is no longer an eligible item in the E-Rate program, so that was just a change, in case you were wondering, why did we strike telephone services? It was because it's no longer reimbursable.
Thank you so much.
You, Board Member Walker, I've got a couple of questions, just one really. But I'll defer to my colleague, if, if they have a question. Board, Board Member Busser Strather, do you have anything before I go? Okay.
I do not.
Well, I, I think you all, I appreciate the humbleness that you all have done coming into tonight's conversation. But if you all would just take Dr. Zuckerman and talk about the good work you all have been able to do because of E-Rate. I think, you know, a lot of our work around one-to-one, some of our COVID work, we've been able to do some really good infrastructure work in the school district. I think the general public would benefit from hearing the work that you and your team have done with the existing E-Rate dollars. I know a couple of weeks ago, E-Rate was in jeopardy federally, and I don't think that's the case anymore. So we are super glad. So can you at least talk about the good work you all have done in the balance of this time?
Thank you, Dr. Moss, of course. So, E-Rate in combination with other federal funding, and obviously, local board funding has helped us just continue to modernize, as I use that word a few times, just our overall technology environment. So, for example, several years ago, we started in our schools, we're at a one hundred meg for Internet bandwidth, for example, and now we're getting up to ten gig in, in our high schools. And so that expansion from, of that, that network bandwidth, just is a perfect example of just, that costs a lot of money to do that, for every school in the district, and continue to expand the bandwidth that we have. That's, that's funded and underwritten by, by, by the E-Rate program, as one example. And the reason for that, and the reason we have had to expand the network the way we have, is just what you talked about, Dr. Moss. We've, we've quadrupled our technology infrastructure in terms of hardware, in terms of student and staff laptops, and all of this is really a post-COVID phenomenon that the world is just forever altered. For better or worse, we are now completely connected digitally, and we need our students to stay connected. So the E-Rate program just is, is a huge part of that funding stream, and so we are very grateful. We were nervous about E-Rate being cut because it's just such a, it's such a lifeblood for us. So yeah, those are just some of the things that we've done. We talked at length about technology, but I'll, I'll pause and give the floor back to you. Thank you.
No problem. Well, I, I know I don't just speak for myself, but I speak for my colleagues that are here and ones that are not here. We appreciate the work that you all are doing to make sure our kids have the techno, the technological infrastructure to be able to do school every day. Colleagues, do you have anything else? Do you want to jump in here before we take a roll call on this, this item? All right, send it there. None. Ms. Lopez, will you please take the role?
Dr. Moss?
Um, I?
Ms. Busser Strather?
I.
Ms. Walker?
I.
There are three in there affirmative.
All right, Policy zero one two four E-Rate Management will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. At this time, I will, and I will bring Ms. Welsh to the table for our Legislative Update. We also have our, the board's lobbyist, John Till Green, who will join Ms. Welsh in tonight's conversation. So the floor belongs to you, Ms. Welsh. I know you've got lots of good stuff for us. I've been seeing your emails today, so we're excited about what you have.
And I do want to let, that Dr. Zuckerman and Robin Evans know they don't have to stay through the entire meeting. They would like to leave.
Y'all have a good night. We've tasked you all enough today. Thank y'all for being at work today.
Thank you, sir. Nice to see everybody. Have a good night.
Um, I, so I, the big topic, of course, has to do with Senate Bill. And I just lost the number. I can't believe it. That's crazy, since I only spent my entire day reading it and going over it.
Four twenty-nine.
Four twenty-nine, thank you. But I did want to just do a very quick, brief overview of the May meeting, May meeting on Monday. There was a lot of conversation on Monday, where they talked a little bit about the Senate Bill four twenty-nine, but it was supposed to be, it, it was going to the Triple E Committee, that was Monday afternoon, so that everything was sort of up in the air. So there wasn't that much conversation about at that time. But then they spent a lot of time talking about local bills, and one of the bills that came up, and it was quite interesting because a lot of the board members across the different counties got involved, and had to do with House Bill eleven sixty-nine, which doesn't impact us at all, but it has to do with Montgomery County and Howard County, and the legislation mandates that they must now make the, like, the following holidays, Yom Kippur, Juneteenth, the Wali, Lunar, New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and I cannot pronounce the other one. Ida, Ad Ha, I'm sure someone can pronounce it, and Ida. I can't pronounce that last word, but anyway, five or six holidays, they're mandating that they become school holidays. And the reason that it ended up, they spent a good amount of time having a whole conversation about local control and about the fact that the legislators just cannot come in and tell them how to run their school systems. So then they went to the, to the mobile cellphone bills, specifically Senate Bill one thirty, and then House Bill one forty-seven, which are both, uh, two of the different cellphone bills. And again, they spent a good amount of time talking about the fact that they, legislators should not be dictating to, to the county boards that they must have policy, as well as what is in the policy. And of course, the, the majority of the counties in the state already do have cellphone policies. There's a few that don't. However, they still address it, like, through the Student Code of Conduct and stuff, so in essence, they are still addressing cellphones, but they do have policies. So there are strong feeling what, and Maryland State Department of Education just did this major task force study on cellphones, and they're supposed to be providing information to the counties on not telling us what to do, but at least recommendations on what you might want to include in a cellphone policy. So it was, it was that, they, they ended early, but they did, that was the, a big focus of their conversation. So that was, I just wanted to give you just a quick overview of what they had talked about. And then, of course, the big conversation is Senate Bill four twenty-nine. And I will say that the, it was supposed to be with Triple E this afternoon at two o'clock, and instead, they spent all their time, all of their time talking about these energy bills, and like, five minutes before this meeting started, as when they were going to talk about Senate Bill four twenty-nine. So that's a little discouraging, that we could not get a chance to even listen to it. But I will, I was on a Pizzam meeting this morning, which is the superintendent's group, and they, and they had, they had provided talking points, and, and that's why I sent the email I sent, which had to do with, if you have the chance to talk to any of our senators, please do, because of the fact that they're, they're really concerned from a financial standpoint, what the impact could be for the school system. So the Senate Bill, just briefly, it, it, we're going to see if that were to pass, and tonight, they were supposed to vote on it, and, and Chantel, jump in at any point in time, feel comfortable to do that. But there was supposed to be a reduction in state funding of, of, over the four, next four years, of a hundred and twenty-six million, five hundred and six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. And that's the, the, the foundation formula as it relates to collaborative time for the four years, because they're pushing it back. And so for this upcoming year, they're, our county is looking at a twelve million, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three reduction that we were, and thought we would be receiving. And then, and in addition to that, that because of that, this decrease, that it actually impacts then what the, what funding's coming through the county. So the state cuts are doubled, and our total reduction, when you look at the local component, will end up being twenty million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars for one year, and then for the whole four years. So that would be state and local would end up being two hundred and fourteen million, ninety-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars. So a major concern in terms of losing those dollars and pushing it back. In addition to that, the governor's bill funding budget proposal is to shift additional pension costs to the counties. And right now, it seems like that's gaining support, and for Prince George's County, that would be twelve million, six hundred and nineteen dollars, and a hundred, a hundred, six hundred and nineteen, a hundred and sixty dollars for Prince George's County. So what that's doing is, that's putting, that, that's not coming to us personally, but the cost is going to the county government, and says, you know, once they're looking at what they want to fund, you know, for the school system, that's going to be a factor if they're end up spending twelve million plus dollars on, you know, pensions for, you know, our, our staff. So that was a major concern. And then they talked about the fact there, so for concentration of poverty, the school grant program, and, and so I'm telling you all this, but it could change because they're voting, like, right now, they're having this conversation, so it could be a totally different picture by the time I'm finished talking. And so for the concentration of poverty, and they didn't bring this up in Pizzam, but when I was reading through the bill, it said that during two thousand and twenty-seven to two thousand and twenty-eight, the increases for the proportion of the poor people amount for each eligible, eligible school calculated, so pause and just stay at what the FY twenty-six funding amount was. And the only positive thing was, they did keep in the language to allow for district-wide use of the fifty percent of the funding that could be used for, you know, admin costs, like central office costs, to be able to support the schools. That's if you had more than ten community schools, which we don't have to worry, because we have lots and lots of community schools. So, and then on top of that, at the, because the same bill is just like House Bill of, I've lost numbers today, excuse me, the House Bill version, where they had all these things set up for MSD-E, the, this, the Senate's version still has the Academic Excellence Program, which would be a cost of two hundred and three point nine million dollars for four years. It starts up to nineteen three, it's at nineteen point three million, and then ramps up to fifty-two point three million, sixty-three million, and the final year, sixty-nine point three. And then, and during twenty, it is Academic Excellence Program, during twenty-six, twenty-seven, they're going to focus on the early literacy instruction. And then for subsequent years, they're going to expand to incorporate other academic topics and other grade levels with a particular attention to foundational math instruction. And then the whole issue of the MSD-E Collaborative Time Innovation Demonstration Grants, they're going to, they put that back in, since they're cutting the funding. And so there, that means they would put forty-eight point three million dollars over the next four years into grants that we would have to go through the trouble of, you know, applying for and doing all the paperwork and everything to be able to do. And it's crazy, you know, why not just give us back some of the foundation money versus making us have to do the grants? It would, you know, if you're going to spend this amount of money on the grants anyway, then just put it into the foundation cost. And then the next one is the Maryland School Leadership Program, and this is, I think, is more expanded because it creates a principal and school-based leadership program at five point two million over the four years, about one point three million per year. And this is then added to the existing program for superintendents and board members that was in the blueprint and funded at five million dollars a year. So the House, when they did their amendments, they had cut that, but the Senate still has that in there, so that's a concern. And then they have the National Teacher Recruitment Campaign that MSD would be responsible for, and that would be two point one million dollars in a four-year period of time. And then they have the Maryland Teachers Relocation Incentive Grant, which is four million dollars, that's coming from MSD-E. And it would be at four million for, over the four years, it would be one million the first year, two million the second year, and one million the third year. And this grant consists of that, if you are a candidate and you're moving into Maryland to teach, then you, once you have a signed contract, you can apply for this grant, and they'll give each candidate, each person, two, two thousand dollars, which seems pretty cumbersome process to be able, I mean, first of all, the person even needs to know about it, and then they have to go through all the paper to get it, and then here you have MSD staff, and when you think of all the teachers that they would be giving these grants to, the administrative, you know, work on that end, I don't know, it doesn't seem very cost-effective. And then they also, they took back where the House had said they were going to do a way to grow your, give it back to the locals to do their own, grow your own. This, the Senate Bill still has that, and they have thirty-three, that's about thirty-three million per year that's being proposed. And then the other thing is, and this is, I bring this up only because community schools is on our agenda for tonight, but when I was reading through the Senate version, they are talking about requiring county-wide community school implementation plans now, in addition to each community school having their own implementation plan, as well as, if you recall, at the last meeting, we had this whole conversation about how frequently should there be an assessment? How frequently should you be reviewing your implementation plans and everything? And they actually put in language in, in this Senate version that talks about that the school implementation plan should be reviewed at least every two years. So I, I thought that was, that was just, it just got my attention, because we're working on that policy right now. So we might want to not push that through completely until we see what happens with this bill, so that we can go in and make those revisions while we still have it in our hands versus having to start over next year. And then the last thing is, they did put in, the Senate Bill version does have the Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact, so that is in that, in that bill.
Yeah.
No.
Robin, I think if we could bring John Till in, I think there are some legislative moves that are happening because this bill is double-referred between budget and tax, and the three committees, I call them. So, John Till, do you want to jump in and provide a bit of an update around where we are procedurally with these bills and kind of what's happening right now?
Yeah, definitely, and I know it can be a bit confusing, so I guess I'm going to do a zoom out and then start zooming in to, to where we're at in this moment. So zooming out, this bill was assigned to four committees, two in the House, two in the Senate, which means procedurally, both those committees get the chance to add amendments, and then it would go back to the other. So, for example, right now, Budget and Tax just had their opportunity to review at their amendments, and those, they chose with the Triple E Committee to split it up by fiscal impacts and policy impacts for which amendments they'd focus on. So those amendments were passed by Budget and Tax on Friday, the ones related to per pupil funding, collaborative time, et cetera. And I'll go through some of the differences there. And right now, just based off of how procedures look, the Triple E Committee is literally voting, as we speak, on the amendments that they discussed yesterday around the policy provisions. So those would be those grants that Robin went through, those would include the, some of the aspects around collaborative time. It also includes the Interstate Teacher Compact and other areas. And so if Triple E votes to accept all of Budget and Taxes amendments, and I apologize, I'm watching the closed caption on the side, and they are literally talking about now how they don't want to necessarily, they're going to try to stay in their lane, but they do have the opportunity to affect the budget, because those grants and other policy provisions have fiscal areas attached. So I say this to say, once they add their amendments, it's going to go back to Budget and Tax to either confirm, or it may end up going into a conference before heading to the full floor. The benefit for the school board and for PGCPS is that gives us different touchpoints to continue to maneuver. You know, nothing's over until the governor's signing the bill. But yeah, with that said, I will, I do just want to note some of these provisions you all heard, the reason that they're technically still in the bill is because until Triple E Committee votes on the policy-related ones, you would not see any updates in the official documents around those amendments.
Um, I, I, before we move on to our next items, I, I want to bring in my colleagues here, and then I also want to let the public know that around all of these amendments and things, the board has been communicating with all of our delegation members in almost real time this week. I mean, sending emails, text messages in real time, the board has been communicating with our delegation members to let them know these impacts that have been laid out. But it looks like my, my colleague, Board Member Walker, wants to jump in here, so Board Member Walker.
Oh, thank you so much. I was going to actually say that, that we've been able to touch base. But regarding the newest amendments, I was wondering, Dr. Moss, if you have been in on the loop on those, and maybe we can connect with John Till, just to give any feedback that we've been talking about as a collective. I know that John Till has been doing a phenomenal job. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing in Annapolis with these minute-by-minute modifications. But we did have an opportunity to sit down with various senators, and I'm just wondering if there's any amendments that we don't see on paper yet, but you've been talking about. We probably still have the opportunity to connect with them, and maybe we can just, you can share if that opportunity, I know the opportunity exists, but I guess what I'm asking is, I know the opportunity exists, but I guess what I'm asking is, if there are new amendments that are coming up clearly have impact, let's make sure that we are connecting with those, um, senators as well to give our input.
Yeah, John Tell, you want to talk about what we've done today, um, and yesterday, in alignment with what Board Member Walker's talking about?
Yeah, definitely. Um, so, you know, we've, this bill, the original hearing, I'm sure you all remember because everyone was up there, was the middle of February, uh, the nineteenth, I believe. And since then, we've had continuous conversations, um, first targeting the House because that they, you know, took it on first. And once we saw their iteration, have continued to follow up with senators on the triple E and Budget and Tax Committee. Uh, this week, uh, we were able to get a chance to speak in person with, and I'm sorry, I'm losing track of days, last week. Last week, uh, we were actually able to speak with, uh, Chair Barnes, uh, to both thank him for holding the line, but also to make sure, you know, that he understood the provisions that, um, you know, you, you guys, you all still saw opportunities on. Um, and I'm sorry, because I'm gonna have to zoom out again really fast. I forgot to mention the last part of this process because at the end of the day, not only is the Senate, it's gonna have to go through the full Senate, but it's gonna be different than the House version, so then they're gonna have to do what's called a conference committee most likely. Um, and so there will be three selected people from each of these four committees. Um, and they'll then finalize the very final version, and I expect that to be an up-to-the-wire, you know, we're not gonna see it till the last day or two. Um, oh, there's a timer, sorry.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're good. Um, I will, you're good to finish answering Board Member Walker's questions.
Okay, great, so I'll just wrap it up quickly. Um, and so with that said, yes, we're literally sending stuff to the moment. Um, I know you all are able to submit specific questions to the different parts of, um, departments, you know, based off of what arises from our meetings, and so we are almost in like this nice continuous feedback loop right now where we touch base about, you know, you all's priorities, um, and by we, the collectively, uh, touch base about you all's priorities. If something comes up where they need more information, that's brought back. PGCPs has been amazing and super responsive, and so it's just this continuous conversation right now, and probably will be till the seventh.
And I know Board Member Walker has strong concerns about being able to recruit more teachers in that amendment, and I believe we've been still doing work, Board Member Walker, to make sure that um, the Senate takes, um, the Senate adds that version, and I think we've also looped back, one of your concerns was to Chair Barnes around our support for, uh, the teacher compact part for recruitment. So I know that was an amendment um, that, that you talked a good bit about last week, so I did wanna, wanna flag that. Do you want to say anything else, Board Member Walker? I know your time is out, but I want to make sure I let you finish. Okay. Um, any other questions around, uh, SB, Board Member Boozer Struther?
Yeah, thanks so much, and thanks to everyone for your, um, in-person visits last week. I'm sorry I couldn't join you, and, um, I've been getting debriefs and appreciate everyone's contributions. I did want to ask about what was Senate Bill eight five two and the superintendent's recommendations, and it looks like that, that's the Senator Louis Young took the Pizzam memo and all the recommendations. So my understanding that she now has to introduce those to SB four twenty nine in these discussions, that that particular, those bills are now, have stopped.
What was that bill number you just said?
It's the SB eight five two, um, which is essentially all of the recommendations from the superintendents that Pizzam had put together in a memo. She basically transferred that into a piece of legislation, but my understanding, just from reading some coverage, is that she, she said amendments put forward Monday include a seventeen-page proposal offered by Senator Karen Lewis Young. And that she brought those to the Budget and Taxation Committee, but it, based on a previous bill, which makes me think her bill is dead. Is that right? Like the?
You're correct.
Okay. So she now needs to bring those ideas into four twenty nine.
So I just want, for sure, but also want to flag that basically Ben Barnes's bill, the House amended version of HB five oh four reflects many of the priorities that were in SB eight two five. Um, so the House amended version has many of those priorities that she outlined in her document.
Okay, I just haven't heard much about, about that, so I'll go, uh, do we have an updated version of that bill? Is that now accessible, or does someone need to give that to us?
It's now accessible. I can make sure we forward it, uh, back to you. Um, essentially HB five oh four, Board Member Boozer Struther, reflects many of the amendments that you, Board Member Walker, and myself and others went to Annapolis and talked about, um, with just one slight change to the collaborative time. Uh, John Tell, do you want to add more to that and correct me if I'm wrong?
Um, no, you're, you're correct. There was the protection of a lot of the priorities. I think, um, the only thing I would add, and you referenced it with Board Member Walker, is, um, they took out the Interstate Teacher Compact, which was of concern, and that was part of the conversations this week because the Senate has not yet addressed that. Um, but I, I'll make sure to, to get it to Dr. Moss or to Board Member Moss, um, so that you all can have the latest iterations. And, and I apologize in advance because it gets, at this point, there are technically three versions of the bill, the House version, triple E's version, and Budget and Taxes version.
And, and also, I liked that, talking about amendments and other bills, so one of the, Resipac wanted to incorporate House Bill seven twenty-two into, um, the, um, to, to the Senate bill. And the concern, we're very concerned because, um, so that would take a certain amount of sum of money that goes right, it goes directly to, um, the, um, the col, not college and career, but the workforce, um, that committee, that group. And the problem is, we actually oppose that and have opposed it because of the fact that when the money goes out to the Workforce Development Board, we, it's like, we're, so all we're doing is following money. It comes to us and we have to funnel it over to the Workforce, uh, uh, Development Board. And our staff feels strongly that it has, has not been a very good, um, relationship for our kids, for them as well as for their kids, because the Workforce, uh, Board is just doing its own thing. There's no real communication going on and real concerns about, are we doing what we need to, to be preparing these students? So our, our position has been that we do oppose this bill. Um, and so in Pizzam's meeting this morning, they were very concerned because they want, that, that's bill supposed to be coming up in the next week or so, and we, they want to make sure it gets there so that there, that the bill itself can be addressed. But if it ends up getting put into the Senate Bill and that amendment goes, then we got, we will have problems because it'll probably, all that money will probably still go back over to the Workforce Development Board. And that, and that, and we won't have it.
John Tell, I don't know if we flagged this yet. Um, could you flag that for delegation, um, the particular workforce component? Boardman, I, I don't know if we flagged this one before. Board Member Walker, Board Member Struther, you might have to, to help me out here. If we've not flagged.
It, no, it's first, first I'm fully understanding it. We did flag around the funding in the delegate Young bill, um, that I just mentioned. I got, I received clarity on what that bill was saying about it. This is the first time I'm hearing that PGCPs is not satisfied with this relationship. So that is something we could take action on without legislation, obviously, and, and I would like that to be flagged, that we find, that we find out what the, the issues are, because this is, um, I think this is one of the potentially extremely positive aspects of the blueprint is the, is the middle and high school career track and opportunities to stay in Maryland, stay in Prince George's County to work and grow and, you know, make your next decisions, uh, you know, in career and college. So I would like us to get that right in a very positive way.
I got you. All right, um, Board, uh, John Tell and Robin, we'll, let's huddle about that real quick and figure out later what our strategy is to make sure that, and Board Member Walker, see your hand?
Thank you. I was just gonna ask if on our next meeting, we can invite, um, the right representatives from PGCPs just to talk to us about any, um, concerns that they have around that, so we can get out and be able to, um, I think Robert has a great job on that, but I think us being able to ask questions or really um, penetrate into the root cause issue and then to, um, Board Member Boozer Struther's perspective. Probably can handle a number of, of those things, um, things. And then get a go at legislators, just let them know, um, that this probably does not need to be a bill based on whatever the root cause is. And, um, give John Tell the right feedback to give to not only the senators, but also the delegates as well.
I think we can do that. Um, Robin, for the next, um, as we plan our agenda, and Rosa, for our next, uh, P and G meeting, let's do that. I think in the interim, Board Member Walker, if it will satisfy you, I think I'll add something to the tracker to get an immediate response so that, uh, we can deal with what's happening in, in, in the assembly right now, if that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I, I'll, whatever, I'll, I will get more information on this because I, um, I just got bits and pieces, but I will get more information on. But I do want to say that our next meeting, I don't know if Cindy was able to get us an April ninth meeting or not, or will be the end of April, so it could, it's the, the, the session will be over, is what I'm just saying. Doesn't mean we can't have conversations, but I'm just saying the, the actual session will be over.
Yeah, I know Board Member Walker's probably looking forward, uh, for next legislative session, but I, I'll also put the interim strategy around of getting a, a notation to be able to do it pretty quickly, but, uh, I do think it's of importance for us to bring them in to, to do it for, uh, forward to. Especially given that this is the first time my colleagues, as well as myself, have heard that we do have some anxiety around that portion, so I think it would be good to massage that. Um, um, Ms. Welsh, do you have any other, I know you've got other policy items you want to bring up from the General Assembly, uh, uh, any, any other bills you want to talk through tonight?
There is, um, the, so this is a bill that, um, that, uh, uh, all the other counties and, and our county should be, except I haven't been able to get the information back from, uh, our department, related to Senate Bill seven seventy. And it is, um, what it is, is a, a bill, a, hold on a minute, a bill that requires, um, us to, um, provide crisis intervention. If a student gets, if a teacher gets removed from the classroom, the, for, um, any kind of inappropriate sexual behavior, then all they, they're supposed to bring in crisis intervention for all of the, um, students in that particular school. And the problem with that is that, number one, first of all, uh, it's, it's, it's not public knowledge when a teacher is, you know, whatever the iss- issue might be, that teacher does get removed, as well as teachers come and go, or even throughout the school year, for multitude of reasons unrelated to disciplinary. Um, and secondly, that was never the purpose of crisis intervention. The staffing and the work that would have to be done would be pretty extensive. So there is a, there is, uh, we worked, uh, through Greenshaw on the Safe to Learn Act, talks about emergency, the, our emergency plans that all the schools are required to do. And so we are making the suggestion that they make an amendment to the Safe to Learn Act so that, and add in language that is part of an emergency plan, but regardless whether it's a teacher who's had inappropriate sexual behavior, there's many things that happen in schools. I mean, even when you think about schools that have had, uh, active shooters or, you know, just different situations that have caused, uh, you know, anxiety for students and staff, that yes, then we do want to do that. So incorporating that into the student, the school's emergency plan and making that part of that requirement, because each year they are supposed to develop an emergency plan for each of the, you know, each school is supposed to have their own emergency plan. Um, so I think that, um, that is, that is, that is probably the big one that is also coming up, and that's actually, they're actually hearing it on, uh, today, today, tomorrow. Um, and I was hoping I could get some informa, and it all relates back to one incident, I want to say, in Charles County. One particular, just one incident, and that's why this bill came to light, um, and that's why they put the bill in. But, um, the hearing is tomorrow, so it's a little too late to do anything, but that is one that is, one that is like, everyone's having a big conversation, but that's probably the biggest one right now.
Did the administration take a position?
Well, be, unfortunately, because, so this is a late bill that came in, and it was, uh, and we just had it, um, the policy analyst from DLS Senate, beginning of last week, which I had sent it, sent, uh, sent in to get the information, and we haven't gotten it back. So I generally don't like to, um, like, I don't, I'm not gonna put my own spin on something if I haven't received information back from staff and everything, you know, to set, to, you know, feel comfortable that they're feeling the same way I'm feeling. Um, so, but, um, as soon as I get information, I absolutely will put a position in there.
I appreciate you. Um, in the interest of, of time, I do want to see if my colleagues are okay. I believe John Tell needs, um, a letter of support for um, Ben Barnes's, uh, the House amended version, which reflects a lot of our priorities. Um, so I just want to make sure my colleagues are, um, okay with us, uh, sending a letter of support for the House amended version, but to also include the amendment around being able to recruit teachers, and I see Board Member Walker's hands up, um, so I want to entertain that.
Yes, I am confident of sending, um, those amendments through. I think we were very supportive of the amendments that Ben Barnes talked to us about, so I'm okay with that. I think what I would like to, um, better understand are the amendments that's kind of being talked about now. We might have an opportunity to speak to Ben about those if we're in support of what those are. I just don't truly have a good understanding of what's kind of being grappled with, um, right now, but I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to be able to advocate that and talk to, uh, the delegate about it because he's a strong supporter of, um, blueprint.
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, my perspective is, I, I think we should, to your point, Board Member Walker, I think it will be directional, it will give direction for what is not in his amended bill to other folks that like, this is what we support, it holds the line on what, you know, would be impact for PGCPs. Any other amendments, uh, might be adversarial, if you will, to the work that we're trying to do, uh, in PGCPs. Um, I, I did want to, uh, yeah, uh, Board Member Boozer Struther, did you want to say anything on this? I want to make.
And so this is a request around the final version of HB five oh four. Is that what we're talking about now? That we need to, so, yeah, and I, I understand what you're saying, you know, there's some, there's some conversations between the House and Senate that have been left in this that are their politics, not ours. Um, I guess I would say I'd want to send in a letter of support of the, of the funding pieces for sure. Community schools, I mean, you know, we may want to limit, there's a lot in this bill, and we didn't take on all of it the first time either. So when we did testimony, so I would say, like, let's focus in on the big, the big stuff. Let's not, let's not worry about their pol, their politics.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is, um, we should just draft a letter of support around the provisions in the bill that we support and stay focused on the provisions and not necessarily the bill writ large. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That, that would be my preference because, you know, I feel like we've been very good about staying focused on the, the, the front of this bill, the big funding pieces in community schools and all those programs, a little less so. Um, and it feels like, I mean, there is a piece in there around the community schools, around the, the consortium, but again, that it's clear there's a political conversation happening between these two bodies that have, that I, I just don't, I just don't think we weigh in on.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Board Member Walker, I see your hand?
Yeah, this is a awesome discussion. I think per pupil, um, community schools and, um, our collaborative learning is something that we have really been talking about and we have support for. So I think those three buckets are ones that we absolutely give our support for, and we talked to Ben Barnes about those. I think, I, I dare not say the smaller pieces, but I think it's important for us to understand what the discussions are because in the event that there are some that we truly are aligned with, I think it behooves us to let, um, those know that we'll have a vote that, hey, you know what, in the event, you're gonna need to compromise on some things because we recognize where funding is. These are the things that we are aligned with, so know that, so that when you're at the table and we're not, it can come out on top for what Prince George's County, um, needs. So that's my only ask, and we can go whichever way we want, but I just feel like education is knowledge. And the more we know, because I'm not clear on what those pieces are, then we can help to arm not only Ben Barnes, but a number of other delegates who are supportive of it.
I appreciate that. I, um, have lots of respect for that. I, uh, will accept what Board Member Boozer Struther wants to do. And if, John Tell, you feel like you have all the information you need for us to pull that letter together, uh, we'll get it back to my colleagues to review before, you know, before we send it out so that you all can give the necessary feedback.
Yeah, that sounds great. Is it okay if I make, uh, one quick comment, um, on the concerns? Yeah, so just, you know, to, to what Board Member Walker and Boozer, uh, Board Member Boozer Struther said about the complexity of what's going on and, and how you all are deciding around priorities. Um, I do agree, I just want to make one note on a big change that happened between the Budget and Tax, that's different from the House, that is very funding-related. Um, because what Budget and Tax did is so technical, and that's why I agree with you all focusing on what you want rather than feeling like you need to keep up, but they did put in almost. But they did put in almost, you know, it, it was part of the original blueprint discussion, but it wasn't codified. But basically that the funding would zero out if during the Board of Revenue Estimates, um, meeting in December or March anticipated, uh, or so in that timeline between December and March, if there's a three point seven five percent drop on either the federal revenue estimate or the state revenue estimate, then that will zero out the funding and all of this would be moot. Unfortunately, um, and if it's five percent combined, same thing. So that's the biggest difference between the Senate in terms of funding. There's a lot of things that, um, Ms. Welsh did a great job of going through that are very technical, but if I had to flag anything, that, that would be the biggest one. And then the collaborative time, the technical part of it that makes it a little difficult to follow because they did do some moving of the money around. So the amendments sometimes make it hard to actually really see what's happening with the money. Um, but the other big piece with collaborative time is it is affecting the per pupil amount. And so they had to do what's called holding harmless because the way the formula is written, anything touching collaborative time, um, would affect the formula, which would then affect ELL, special education, all of these other formulas. And so they had to do some very technical things there. And so if anyone has any questions, myself, Ms. Welsh, I think we're happy to, to jump in and help, but those are the two things I just wanted to flag. So you do see a per pupil funding reduction in the Senate version versus the House. They are more conservative in terms of spending.
Uh, thank you, Chantel, because actually that's the one, the one you just said, the first one was like the most alarming to me. And I can't believe I didn't type it into the, into the thing because that's pretty serious. It ends up being zero.
Yeah, I want to bring board member Boozer Struther and I know your hand came up. So board member Boozer Struther?
No, I'm just saying, I'm glad we got to that because now that you mentioned it, I was like, oh, yes, we haven't talked about that and what, how will we, we would respond. Now, because I missed, I personally didn't watch it, haven't seen the write-up. I'm a little, I don't feel like I could speak to it as, as directly as, as I would like. Um, but I remember that moment very clearly on the floor in 2020, as we were watching this final vote. Um, while we were also wondering if these folks were ever going to get out of there before, as COVID, COVID closure. It was a very memorable moment. Um, and, and yeah, we, they didn't let it through to my, to my great relief. Um, because I think that just completely undermined the whole point. Like we were finally, the blueprint, the whole point is to protect education funding no matter what. And then they are saying, oh no, we're going to have all these contingencies around budget and revenues and we're not going to try to get revenue. We're just going to have inevitable economic situations like we're facing today. And that is where my great frustration comes in is that the lack of political will around the revenues, that they're just like, eh, all right, we're going to go to zero if this happens. We're not going to try to mitigate. So, I mean, I want to say no, obviously to that. Uh, but I wish we could just say more. I wish we could continue to say more about, about the, um, what they're saying. You know, that this just keeps getting out, you know, what they're trying to say to our children, to our economic development for the state. Um, just doesn't even make any sense.
Um, you know, and I, I'll move us along here, but I want to flag, it might be of importance for us to add some language to our letter of support that we are going to send, that this is a provision that would really impact PG CPS. I don't know how we write that in the letter. Uh, John tell you and I can massage it. We'll run it back to the colleagues. Uh, you know, board member Walker is good with language, so she might be able to pull some stuff together on that one. But, um, let's, let's get some of that in the, in the letter as well, if that's okay with the rest of my colleagues. Okay. For, um, Ms. Welsh, I want to give it to you here and then I want to make sure we get our last policy items out of the way tonight.
Um, and I, I wanted to follow up on what, uh, board member Boozer Struther said because we've, we've made commitments already for what we were expected funding. And that's very scary when you look at our negotiated agreements and everything, and those are all compounded increases every year. So, uh, we're like getting in deeper and deeper and with the idea that they were going to fund us for all this time. And then if this other provision were to come to light, that, uh, we would really be, we'd have major, major problems as a school system.
That's true. Yeah. We'll, we'll reflect that in the comments. I appreciate you saying that out loud for the public. Uh, that gives them something to hang their hats on too. Um, but, um, I'm going to move us past the legislative update. I think we have what we need to advance this week. Uh, colleagues, I'll make sure you all get that letter as we normally do before we advance anything. Um, but it might be, uh, you know, pretty rushed couple of next hours to get that done because I think John Tell is going to need it for tomorrow. So, um, I will bother you all tonight. Um, all right. Um, if everybody is good with legislative update, colleagues, y'all are good. You need anything else? All right. If not, I'm going to move to policies for first consideration, discussion items. Uh, there are three more items for discussion. Each member, you'll have two minutes. Uh, um, you have two rounds per item during the discussion and each round is worth two and a half minutes. We're going to start with policy forty one thirty five, activities, organizations, uh, political. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh for an overview of policy forty one thirty five, act, activities, organizations, political. Ms. Welsh?
Okay, Rose, do you mind putting that policy up on the screen, please? So this policy, um, uh, we, this is an old policy that I, I, uh, did go ahead and amend to, uh, sort of update it. Um, and basically what it's saying is, is that, um, we absolutely recognize that all of our employees, you know, they absolutely have the right to have their, their, they have political rights and responsibilities and, um, such as voting, discussing political issues, campaign for candidate, uh, candidate position, running for serving in public office, any of those kinds of things that, um, they, they're interested in. But those, one of the most important things, especially those employees who work with our students is that they, um, we, and we do believe they have First Amendment rights, but those rights have to be weighted against the rights of our students to learn in a nonpartisan environment. And so that's why it's critically important that they are not, um, making, taking the effort to, uh, try to, you know, convince students to think a particular way. And then if you, so the purpose of the policy is really to set forth the position of the board with regard to employee participation in political activities. And there's a, a wide variety of definitions that define what, uh, what's in the, um, policy. We can scroll down beyond that and get to the standards. There we go. And so, uh, first of all, these are the things, there's several of these were already in the policy previously, which I did include, but that, which I have here, but then I went ahead and added some extra things. So employees shall refrain from involvement in political activities and campaigns during the working day and in school set, and in the school setting, and such activities shall not negatively impact the employee's ability to fulfill, fulfill their job duties. Um, this, now, this next one comes actually from the law. It says, employees shall not advocate the overthrow of the government by unconstitutional or violent means. So I did put that into the policy. I did notice that a couple of other school systems have that in their policy too, but that is definitely from the law. And then the next one, at no time is PG CPS student to be regarded as, as, or used as a form by an employee for a political activity. And then a political, an employee shall not use his position to exploit students, parents, or other employees in the interests of his campaign. Uh, the board should not endorse any employee seeking public office. Um, and that means the board as a whole. Uh, the employee shall not be obligated to contribute to or render political service. Um, and employees should not be subjected to political activity or on school grounds during the working day or during a school sponsor activity. Nothing in this policy should be construed to mean that employees are restricted though from conversing with colleagues about political topics during breaks, lunches, outside the presence of students. Uh, employees shall not be provided with additional compensation or benefits for engaging in political activities. Um, an employee may be assigned to, um, uh, attend meetings of non-curricular student-led, uh, student-initiated political clubs at a secondary school. However, the employee shall not be compelled to monitor or attend such a student political club meeting if it, the content of the speech at the meeting is contrary to their beliefs of the employee. And then employees who are assigned though to monitor these clubs are not permitted to promote, lead, or participate. Um, they are merely there as a presence and it's, uh, in a non-participatory capacity. It's really to ensure that disciplines maintained and, you know, student participation is voluntary. And then election activities involving employee associations shall be, shall be conducted in accordance with our negotiated labor agreements. Uh, our, all employees shall not use PG CPS facilities, equipment materials, or personnel during working hours in conducting their campaign or in execution of their duties if elected. And then a candidate's use of school facilities is governed by a administrative procedure thirteen thirty. And then an employee, if elected to a public office, which would require full-time service or represents a conflict of interest with their duties required as an employee of PG CPS, should have the choice that either they can resign if they want, or they can just receive a leave of absence without pay. Um, and, uh, from PG CPS for the period of their tenure in office. So that's sort of that in a nutshell.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um, the question is, shall the committee recommend policy forty one thirty five, activities, organizations, political to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion on this item. Ms. Lopez, please take a roll call vote.
Dr. Moss?
Uh, aye.
Ms. Boozer, uh, Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
She just lost service. Give her, this is a time for her to lose service.
Okay, um, yes, if she doesn't connect, we may have to end.
Yeah, we'll, we'll hold, we'll hold our business until she reconnects.
Okay. All right. I believe she's connected. So I will start all over.
No problem.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker? Okay.
You couldn't in and out. I, but she said aye, okay.
Okay. All right. Three in the affirmative.
Uh, I, I'm so sorry. Aye, aye, aye.
Uh, policy forty one thirty five, activities, organizations, political will be recommended to the policy sponsors for revision approval. Uh, there are three in the affirmative. So let's move to policy fifty one fifty. Um, the chair recognizes Ms. Welsh for an overview of policy fifty one fifty, student involvement rights and responsibilities.
Okay, thank you. Um, Rose, would you mind putting, yes, thank you. So this particular policy and, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I think it didn't cross out. I will go back and get it crossed out involvement. I took the, the word involvement out because of policy.
Ms. Ms. Welsh, we'll have to pause business for a second. We don't have a form. So, um.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No problem. You can proceed. We have a form now.
Okay. Um, so what I was saying is that it, it actually, the policy itself is student involvement rights and responsibilities. But the purpose of the policy really was about talking about student rights and responsibilities, and it is driven actually by law. Um, and so, and as far as involvement, we have, we have, um, we also have students, um, the extracurricular activities and clubs and all these other things. So I went ahead and just took that out because it's the focus of this policy is really about the students' rights and responsibilities. Um, and so, um, as far as the policy statement, it says that the, the Board of Ed is committed to providing an educational environment which promotes intellectual development, responsibility, citizenship, and respect. The board believes that all students have the right to be free, to, uh, be free, to free, wait a minute, right to free inquiry and expression, due process, equal educational opportunity, freedom from discrimination. And then in exercising these duties, each student is expected to respect the rights, privileges, and welfare of others, as well as the student. Um, the board recognizes the need to provide students with information regarding their rights and responsibilities. So this is, the purpose of the policy is really to provide the guidelines for the development of the student rights and responsibility handbook, which is also an administrative procedure, but, but everyone does refer, refer to it as a student rights and responsibility handbook. So then there's definitions for, um, things that are actually in, in the body of the policy. You can just scroll down. Um, thank you. Keep, uh, continue, school, community, and then, uh, stakeholders. So then as far as the standards, um.
Ms. Welsh, I'm going to cut you off for a second. We lost a form again. So I'm sorry. I'm, please forgive me.
That's okay.
I do have an off the record question. There's just, well, nevermind. You can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that as far as the standards, it says that the superintendent's designee shall develop a student rights and responsibility handbook. And it is the framework for academic standards, student behavior, uh, as to also permit, permit positive, supportive, inclusive learning environments, maximize student academic achievement, and minimize student behavior issues. So I'm sure you've all, I've been through the student rights and responsibilities handbook and it's pretty, you know, it covers a lot of material and it does reference a lot of policies and procedures. And, uh, it doesn't just have the student code of conduct that talks about everyone's responsibility in terms of educating the students and, and just, um, a lot of their protections also. Um, and so, um, as far as what should be included in the student rights and responsibility handbook, I said it should definitely set forth as students' rights and responsibilities established by board policies and administrative procedures. And just as a side note, if you go through that handbook, you'll see there's like, uh, probably two pages listed of all these policies and procedures of which the handbook actually does address in some fashion. And then it also, the handbook should also communicate expectations of respectful and responsible student behaviors based on age, developmental areas, needs of the student and school community. It should share school and community resources for students, parents, and families. Uh, data, identify levels of responses and interventions regarding student behavior, which it does, and then provide information about the student appeals process. Um, that also the handbook should confirm to guidelines established by the Maryland State Board of Education. And that, and that particular phrase right there is in the law. Um, unfortunately, I cannot, I could not find the Maryland State Board of Education guidelines. I have looked everywhere for them. But because it is sitting in the law, I, I put it into the policy because you, our, our, our policy should align with law. And then, um, the other thing that I think is really important, and actually, um, the chief of staff has already begun the process of relooking at the handbook for this year. And one of the things that's important is involving stakeholders from the school community to review the handbook and get input from them. And then also, um, the other thing is, is once it's done, it's critically important to, that the superintendent's designee ensures that the handbook is presented to students at the beginning of each school year, as well as that it's, uh, disseminated annually to all members of the, uh, school community, community, including teachers, administrators, and parents. Um, so, um, that, that's in the nutshell. If there's other things that you would like to have as it relates to what you would like to see in the handbooks, that this is your opportunity to, to share that so that we can add it to the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um, the, the question is, shall the committee recommend policy fifty one fifty, student involvement, rights, and responsibilities to the policy sponsor for revision and approval? Are there any comments from board members or questions? Ms. Lopez, will you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Three in the affirmative?
Uh, there are three in the affirmative. Policy fifty one fifty, student involvement, rights, and responsibilities will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision and approval. Um, the next is policies for second consideration, public comment. There is one item. Um, it's community schools. The question is, shall the committee recommend policy eleven hundred to the full board for public comment consideration? I am going to ask my colleagues to, to, um, table this item, um, pending new information from Ms. Welsh. Ms. Welsh, I believe that was your recommendation earlier.
Well, after I read that Senate version and they had specific language of what they're requiring for community schools, I, and, and who knows what the final version is going to look like, but I thought, since we already have the policy open, we might as well wait. And, um, it won't, within the next couple of weeks, we'll know. So we can just go ahead and get it revised to incorporate those things too. If, in fact, it does make it through.
Perfect. Colleagues, are you all fine with that before we entertain this vote? Okay, cool. Um, uh, well, the, the question is, shall the committee, um, postpone, um, policy eleven hundred to the full board for public consideration? Uh, Ms., uh, is there any, is there any discussion? Ms. Lopez, please take a roll call vote to postpone, um, policy eleven hundred to the full board for public comment consideration. Ms. Lopez, please take a roll call vote to postpone um policy eleven hundred to the full board for public comment consideration.
Okay, Dr. Moss?
Um, aye.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Hi.
Okay, three in the affirmative?
Uh, there are three in the affirmative. Policy fifty one fifty, student involvement rights and responsibilities will be postponed until the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting for further consideration. There are no policies for third consideration tonight. Um, we will get ready to adjourn, but I do wanna say something before we adjourn. Um, the Policy and Governance Committee, um, last week, just, just a, just an announcement to the public, had an advocacy day. Um, it was helped to be organized by uh the administration, Ms. Welsh, Quincy, that whole team, um, really did a great job getting our students to Annapolis. But I wanted to take this moment uh to really recognize Board Member Boozer Strutter, who has advocated for this advocacy day with young people for, before I got on the board. And I know she and Board Member Walker were working on making it happen last year, but we were able to make it happen this year. Unfortunately, she was traveling with other students doing other work for PG CPS, and so she missed it. So I did want to uh, you know, just acknowledge to the public that this is something the board had worked on. Prior to me being on the board, it had been a priority of Board Member Boozer Strutter, and I know other members. Um, and so I just wanted to take space to do that at the end of the meeting. I do wanna give my colleagues an opportunity to say something around this. I know Board Member Walker was there last week. Um, Board Member Boozer Strutter wasn't able to attend, but she was making sure the event happened. Um, so I'll, I'll extend the floor to you. If you all wanna say anything to the public about last week's event.
Well, I could just jump in and thank everyone for making it a big success and focusing on school construction funding and and bringing in our uh CTE students and in the building trades and and making it so comprehensive that connecting the blueprint to, to this future of um, the needs for school construction funding and inadequacy for our school system and Maryland's students. Um, I did wanna say I was able to go Monday night to the Strong Schools Maryland Joint um event that many school districts supported and uh, you know, did the approvals for their students to go up, you know, ride the Strong Schools um buses and be there. And the um, so I got a preview of our own students as well as, you know, students around the state who actually were speaking quite, you know, probably to, to an extent where it's making me feel a little bit like the adults were being put to shame that we were not showing up in as large numbers to fight the way the students were fighting in the direct connections to Blueprint. Um, I think about a student from, you know, City of Baltimore who just, you know, her connection to the, her CTE program and the Blueprint, and our own students from High Point High School, Northwestern High School to community schools and their opportunities that um, that we need to do more of this for our students, give them that voice and introduce them that visiting their um, their House and Senate members, assembly members, is there, is there right? And that they, that we need to show them, you know, the, the way and give them the opportunities because that's the feedback we received was that they, they didn't know that they could go and sit down with their senators. And now they have lots of ideas about how they'd like to sit down with their senators. So um, I just wanna thank everyone for making both of those events happen. Uh, uh, Chief of Staff Boyd and Superintendent House, uh, of course, um, were part of all that, too. So thank you.
Um, I, I know I'm gonna take just a moment of personal privilege here. You didn't do it, but the Mount Rainier PTO President, uh, Timothy Meyer, uh, from your district, joined us in Annapolis. And so just wanna make sure, you know, we acknowledge the parent participation. And I mean, Tim's great. He's been helping us do follow-ups this week, even with members of the General Assembly. Um, so, you know, in your, in your stead, uh, Tim, Tim was there behaving as Board Member Boozer Strutter would. So uh, just wanted to acknowledge him. Uh, Board Member Walker, uh, did you wanna to add? Because I believe you had some parents with you, too.
Older. Yes, really quickly, I'll just add in, it's always a privilege to uh be able to have our scholars with us, to be able to advocate in their own words. It's always great to put a narrative and a, and a uh picture in place around what they're saying in a classroom. It's great for education. It's great for our advocacy. Wanna definitely thank our parent groups who are out there, Frederick Douglass specifically, but we had a number of the parent and advocates that were there. So any type of partnership is amazing, and I'll tell you that it makes a difference in advocacy. So just wanna say thank you all so much. This has been um an amazing session, and I think that we're gonna continue to get traction, more and more traction. And there's already people saying, how can I um have my school be able to join board? So we've already kind of been talking a little bit about how we wanna even enhance it a little bit more next year and make sure we have representatives from each of the different districts. But uh, this was, this was phenomenal. So thanks so much for the vision and of course, to our administration's um support, who's been really supporting us through this process as well.
Thank you, Board Member Walker. Um, and I also had um, uh, Anthony Tillman, um, who joined us as well to help advocate that day, and so many other parents. I know some of the District Seven parents took a, a letter and, and sent it off as well. Um, I know Ms. Ms. Milhouse, who's been working with all our parents in uh District Seven, um, actually did a letter to send to folks advocating for Blueprint funding. So folks are doing all kind of advocacy work everywhere. Uh, Ms. Welsh, I'll let you be the final remarks before I join the meeting.
All, all I wanted to say was that um, it, it was a, a very lovely day, and I, the students, I think, thoroughly enjoyed themselves. And I was so impressed, actually, with the uh delegates and the senators. They went way out of their way to spend a lot of time talking to them, and not just about even, uh, you know, political issues and everything, but also about their own personal, the students' personal lives and what their opportunities are and what things they should be considering and taking advantage like of scholarships and internships and stuff. They really took an interest in the students, and I, I think that the students, uh, when talking to the teachers and everything, they felt too, that the students felt pretty special with the time that the delegates and the senators spent with the students.
Yeah, thank you so much. And again, um, just thank you to the administration for working really hard to pull this together. We can't stress this enough. Superintendent House's team, Quincy Boyd, and thank you to our delegation, our House delegation. If any of them get to watch this, um, Chair Williams, Nicole Williams, worked really hard to make sure we had meeting space. Um, our delegation was just so complimentary. So I just wanna make sure we acknowledge the folks that are helping us out a good bit. Um, the chair informs the public that the next virtual.
And I'll just, oh, sorry, just real quick, I'll also, oh, oh, that's okay. I'll just, my internet is probably going in and out, but I'll also add in that when that room was open for lunch, we had so many of the delegates just rolling through. We can't even add all of their names right here, but everyone came in in order to address our scholars. That is such a big deal. The word got out that we were there, so not only the ones that signed up for that day, but everyone from the French Georgia County delegation made sure that they came and they addressed our students. And that was just so powerful for them to be able to see that people were taking out time from their day out of meetings to be there to address them and answer any questions that they had. So um, from the delegation side, that was amazing. I'm sure they did the same on the um Senate side uh as well.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you so much, colleagues. The chair informs the public that the next virtual policy and Governance Committee meeting will be on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, I mean, twenty twenty five. Uh, please continue to check the French Georgia County Board of Education website uh for meeting information, updates. Thank you all for great discussions and attendance tonight. To our viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business, the time is now six nineteen. The March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned.